The organizers have gone around with a basket and note cards. If you'd like to submit a question for the forum tonight, please do. I'm asking that you would get in your questions before the question and answer session begins. We are gonna have opening statements, we're gonna have introductions, we're gonna have a brief word from one of our school board members. However, if you do have a question, please try to get it forward to one of the organizers here in the front row before we start questioning so that we can try to work around some consensus around questions that will impact as many people in the room as possible as opposed to maybe the one singular narrow issue that you may want to take up with your candidates. So, we're gonna get started in just a couple minutes. Just missing is Mr. Seberoff, who I know is here, and we'll get started in a couple minutes. Alright, good evening, everybody. Everybody here be okay? This is the only time I'll be standing up, so I just wanted to get a good look at everybody. My name is Dave Carr, tune in. If you're just coming in and they just asked me to find a seat, there are plenty of good seats still available. We are gonna get started. I will go through the ground rules in just a moment, but first I wanted to take a second to introduce myself to those of you who don't know me. You're clearly watching the wrong channel. I am the morning co-anchor with Kim Gesbi on WSAB's East Coastal Sunrise. I've been up since 3:00 this morning, so please forgive me if I can't put two words together. I'm delighted to be here to moderate this forum. I wanted to say thank you to the JEA, to Southern Mamas, to the PTAs who put this event together. And in the interest of full disclosure, I am a Savannah-Chatham County Public School parent. My five-year-old goes to Jacob J. Smith Elementary School and is just finishing out kindergarten. We've been delighted by the experience, and I care very much about public education, so I'm happy to be here with you. I would encourage you all to watch Coastal Sunrise if you don't already. It's one of the reasons I do these events. I thank you for being here. I've gathered a lot of your questions. I'm hoping to formulate any of them around some of the preparation that I've already done, and I hope that we gotta have a lively discussion here tonight. I will take you to the ground rules, but first I want to introduce you to one of your Chatham County Public School Board members, Julie Wade, who is here with us, who is gonna say a few words, introduce some of the process, why it's important, though I think you know why it's important that you're here, and generally just spread good feelings and cheer. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. I was telling you, my ten-year-old son is at Jacob J. Smith, and he is David's son, Reedy Buddy, and he thinks that's like a cool celebrity thing. Oh, that's Reedy Buddy's dad. It's a pleasure to be here with you. I'm a member of the school board, I represent District One, which includes Ellis, Jacob J. Smith, Hess, Herb, Savannah Arts, White Love, and I forgot, I'm Marv. No, no, no. Hess, no. Oh, it's been a long day. But I'm privileged to be here. I wanna thank the JEA and Savannah Mamas for making public education a priority and having this tonight. I wanna thank you for being here and making public education a priority. I know particularly this time of year, those of you with young kids in the school system are busy with end-of-the-year projects and end-of-the-year activities, so I know it's particularly difficult times to be here. And I wanna mostly thank the five of you for your commitment to public education. You're here willing to commit the next four years of your lives to public education, and it says a lot. And we appreciate you being here, we appreciate the conversations you've already had with people throughout the community about public education. All of those conversations are beneficial to our entire system, and so mostly I am grateful for you for running. Having just come out of seven-and-a-half hours of support meeting, which I happen to leave early, I scratched my head and thought, why am I having anyone ever want to do this? The pay is lousy, the hours are long and inconvenient, the naysayers are very vocal, and the supporters are often very quiet. And so it is a challenging job, and I appreciate your efforts to do it. There's a reason the eight of us that are currently on the board are not sitting here at all. We appreciate you being here. The good news is whoever wins will come to a very strong school board. The people that are re-elected are not being challenged, so all eight of us will continue on the board. We all have the same goal, and that's a strong public education system. We may disagree about how to get there, but at the end of the day, our goal is the same. We work well together, we laugh a lot, we have great respect for one another. So even when we disagree, as we all often do, it is a strong board, and we look forward to working with whoever is our leader. The school system has made great strides under Dr. Buck, our current president, and Dr. Lofferty, the longest-serving superintendent in Chatham County. They've made tremendous strides in the public education system. There's still work to be done. Poverty, as you know, plays our public school system and our community. Teachers are told from the state, federal government, what to do in the classroom, yet not really given the resources to actively do that. State continues to underfund public education here, which requires us to lean on our tax base here. There are significant challenges. In this community, I think we have a problem with opt-out. A lot of families opt out of the public education system, which also affects our graduation rates, our test scores, our resources available in this community. So we have some challenges here that we continue to work on. While we're making progress, there is still great work to be done. So it's a pleasure to serve. I believe that public education is the core of any community, can never be stronger than your public school community, and so if you have a weak public school community, you're never gonna be a strong community. So Savannah rises the call with its public education. Y'all recognize that? You're here. Y'all recognize that? You're here. We're grateful for the support, and we look forward to serving with one of you starting in January. Best of luck to you.
Alright, thank you, Julie. Our candidates are all here tonight. We're delighted they're all here. They are sitting from right to left in alphabetical order. They will have their own opportunity to introduce themselves to you in a 90-second opening statement. The other ground rules are as follows. We have a timekeeper at the front of the room. They will hold up a yellow sign with a 15-second warning. The red, or mostly red, maybe pink, this is a Southern Mamas event, indicates that your time is up. When your time is up, I will cut you off, and we will not continue, we will move on to the next person. After the 90 seconds of opening statements, we will move in a fashion that I crafted with the organizers of this event. For any of you who attended the local version of the debate between the eight candidates for the first district in Congress on the Republican side for the nomination, they had a system that I thought worked very well for a forum with a lot of candidates. So we are gonna try to follow the spirit of that by making sure that every candidate gets the chance to answer the same question. That's why I've asked for the questions to come forward in advance. It's not that I don't want your voices to be heard, it's that I wanna try to craft the questions in a way that everyone can answer them. So, after our opening statements, I will answer our ask around a question where each candidate, in varying orders throughout the night, will each get one minute to answer the question in the way they see fit. I like the minute because after doing enough debates, you realize more time than that allows them to go off on really any topic they'd like to talk about. After that, we will move to closing statements where they will each have two minutes in the reverse order that they went for their opening statements to close. One minor detail, I stand in the way of many people, but I do not stand in the way of the Lord. So Reverend Ellis needs to leave to be on the pulpit at 7:30. When that time arrives, we will allow him to make his two-minute closing statement in the midst of the event, and we will allow him to leave. Without further ado, please withhold your applause except for this one moment now when we applaud all of our candidates to be here. And in alphabetical order, we begin with Ms. Sadie Brown, who will begin with her opening statement.
I stand up 'cause I'm shut up. Good evening. I want to thank the JEA for having us here this evening, and I want to introduce myself as a teacher thirty-seven years, a substitute teacher for the last eight years, and a warrior for our children. I'm a mother of two sons, fifteen years apart. I lost a youngest one in 2004 because of DJ that was killed on Presidents' Street, but he is my warrior. And I also have over thirty-five thousand children in the public school system.
Good evening. My name is Joanie Byrne, and I'm running for Savannah-Chatham County School Board President because I believe in the power of public education to lift up children, families, and entire communities. I know this is true from personal experience. Both of my parents were high school dropouts, and their parents before them as well. Growing up, we faced severe economic hardship, including a period of homelessness. We overcame those challenges. I had to put myself through school. I worked two jobs in order to get a degree at Armstrong. And I really believe that the reason that I broke the cycle of poverty in my family is that I got that quality education, and that my son now has a better life than I have. And I'm running because I want every child in our community to have that same opportunity. Sixty-five percent of our children in our community are on free or reduced lunch in our public schools. That means that they are coming from families that are struggling economically. We have to make ensuring that they get an excellent education our priority so that they can live better lives and so that they can lift up the next generation. That's why I'm running for school board president.
Good evening. Let me thank those who are sponsoring us for being here tonight. My name is Reverend Chester Ellis, Chester Ellis, and I'm running because I was requested by former colleagues who taught in the public school system with me. I taught for thirty-three years. Teachers who were president of the school system, bus drivers, janitors, maintenance workers, who asked me to do this, and what they were looking at is the job that I had done in establishing Woodville-Tompkins, that is a model that we introduced, Dr. Lockery, that has come out real good. And just today, they were among, were named among the, one of the thirty top schools in their area. And so I'm here at the request of them. I come as a servant. I come to serve this present age, and I come to answer the call that has been put upon me. Thank you.
Hi, hello, everyone. My name is Doris Seberoff, I'm Reverend School Board President. Ninety seconds is not a lot of time, so I need you guys to do two things. The first thing, do we have any teachers or educators in the room right now? So please stand. Do we have any custodians, lunchroom workers, anybody in the room? This is Teachers Appreciation Week. I want to tell you guys, thank you, that's what I'm using my ninety seconds to do. We're actually passing out a couple of flowers for y'all just to let you know that I appreciate you, our family appreciates you, and our children appreciate you. But my name is Doris Seberoff. If a question comes up and you guys don't hear the answer from me because we only have a minute to answer it, my personal cell phone number is (912) 401-4104. And you can call me anytime. You won't get my campaign manager, you won't get my wife, but you will get me, and I'd be willing to answer any questions that you guys have.
I can't top that. I don't mean by my wife flowers. Anyways, my name is David Simons. I'm running for school board president, obviously. I'm a businessman, I'm a veteran. I have served in Iraq during 2005, and then I've served two tours in Afghanistan in 2011 and 2013. The reason I'm running is quite simple. As the school board president, my belief is, is there feedback? My belief is that any child that graduates from the system that cannot get a job, a career, or a college degree, we have failed him. We as the community have failed him or her. It is our responsibility to ensure that our children going through the system graduate and have that ability to get a job, or get a career, or go to college. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. We will now move and begin the first question with Ms. Byrne, and move to the left from there, and we will rotate the answering order for all the questions thereafter. Again, one minute to answer. One ground rule that I didn't lay out for you is another one that I like very much. If another candidate should be mentioned by name in another candidate's response, that candidate will be given thirty seconds to apply any of the charges that have been made against them. I should also ask that if you have phones that are on, please turn them down, vibrate off, do not disturb. Even though you can go through these things and plan all these ground rules, you can never quite account for somebody bringing flowers, so. Let's start with Ms. Byrne. My first question has to do with your personal experience when it comes to the public school system, specifically here in Chatham County. We know your qualifications at this point, we know the experience, profession that you may bring to the table. However, what I'm interested in hearing from each of you in the next six to two seconds is what personal experience have you had with the Chatham County school system as a parent, the relationships that you've had perhaps, members of the current board, teachers, educators, you know? However you wish to frame your answer, I would like to know the personal experience that you have with this Savannah-Chatham County Public School District that influences the decision that you've made to run for this position and how you would conduct yourself as the president of the board. You're first, Mr. Byrne.
Well, I was a public school teacher at, is this? I was a public high school teacher at Rose High School, and my experience there was that we had a number of students coming in. I was teaching ninth grade. I had fifteen-year-olds who were reading on a fifth and sixth grade level. It was very disheartening to me and to them. They knew that it was going to be very difficult for a teacher to catch them up within one year from fifth grade to tenth grade. And so many of them had lost hope, we had a lot of discipline problems, and I think that that directly correlates to the challenges we've had with the graduation rate at Rose High School. I'm also a public school parent, so my son is at school at Charles Ellis. We absolutely love it, it is a fantastic school. It is one of the many wonderful schools we have in our district, but I did experience some anxiety in trying to find the right school for him, and I know that other public school parents have that anxiety as well.
Ms. Byrne, thank you. I know it is fast, but I promise that you will get to the hard answer as this exercise goes on. We move now to Reverend Ellis. Reverend Ellis, we know about your experience in the school system. Tell us about your personal experience with the board, with others, with children, with grandchildren in your case, that influenced your decision to have to conduct yourself.
What you must know about me is that the Woodville-Tompkins High School, Technical Career High School, was a model that we took to Dr. Lockery when he came to town. We introduced it to the previous superintendent board the four years. We've been working with the board, this present board, to establish that and to get that off the ground. I have three grandkids in the public school system. I have three daughters that came through the public school system. And I also have twelve mentees in the public school system right now, and I have nine families that have members of the public school system that are mentoring at this present time.
Thank you, Mr. Seberoff. You do not have children. However, tell us your experience within the public school system and how it influenced your decision to run and how you conduct yourself.
Well, yes, I don't have any children at the time. I am an uncle. I have a lot of nieces and nephews within the public school system. And one of my oldest nephews, he actually, he was in trouble, and his mom works two jobs. So I had to take the time and the opportunity to sit with him in class, make sure that he behaved, and then correct his path and make sure he's going down the right direction. But in addition to that, I don't tell a lot of people this, but I'm a former sub. I cannot do the job that a teacher does, and I realized it by subbing before I went on to my career. But also, I volunteered, I was working in the process of volunteering with Savannah High School to start a stop-bus-driving campaign right before I decided to run for office. So after the campaign, we're gonna pick that up where I left off. And then also, I recently worked with local businesses to help them figure out ways that they could do more business with the school system.
Mr. Simons, you have a name?
Quite, the reality is I have been involved with the public school system since 1998, when I worked on my first campaign with the person in this room tonight. I've helped elect or have represented several members of the school board, someone that are in the room tonight. There's probably not a week that goes by that we don't discuss an issue or was about some sort of issue that is impacting the public school system and what is the relevance of it, and that's been going on now well over a decade and a half, working with the school board members that I have helped work for to bring them to your school board. With that, I'll ask.
Okay, and with that, we'll move on to our next question. Oh, I'm sorry, see, I've already done it. I've already broken my own ground rules. Forgive me.
That's alright, I'm used to it. Again, I now work in the school system. I have been in every school, practically every school in Chatham County. I won't take claim on Pula because that's a little far. I've gotten far as Garden City and one or two schools in Pula, but I see the need, I see the need every day, and it's not in just one school, it's across the board. So working with the board, we can correct some of the problems that we have. Our curriculum needs some serious attention. Our teachers need some serious help. The school, community, the businesses need to become a viable part of what we're doing. We don't know what's going on on this side of town as opposed to the other side of town. Our children are the forerunners in my heart. So if we don't have an adequate curriculum for them, how do we expect them to excel?
Thank you. Now we will move on to the next question. This question will begin with Reverend Ellis, and continue moving to the left. My perspective as a now-public-school parent is bridged by ten years of working at WSAB twelve years ago, leaving for a decade and coming back and working again. I have witnessed extraordinary qualitative growth in this school district since I last covered it a decade ago. My question for you now is, while most public school districts have a system of winners and losers based on zip code or boundaries or districts, Chatham County has made strides to go beyond that by creating specialty programs. However, we've created a new system of winners and losers based on a lottery to get into these programs. How would you enhance that program? Would you change it? And how do you mitigate for the losers? Which I think in this case, many in this room feel like some students who don't win the lottery are.
I would work to get away from the lottery. I hate the lottery, because we always have winners and losers when you have the lottery. And I think the only way to do that is to take those specialty schools, do them well, and then have them spread out throughout the district.
Ms. Seberoff, you have a name?
Well, first I'm gonna stop standing up because I lose two seconds every time I get up. Right now, we're looking into moving towards the pathway system. What that's gonna do by the end of eighth grade, our students will have to have a graduation plan put in place, and that will help dictate what school they would go to, if the board tees to go along with the current plan that the superintendent is suggesting. So that would kind of get away from the specialty program. For example, Beach High School is medical management. So if any kid that's interested in going to a medical program, whether it's CNA, nursing, they would attend Beach. They would not have to wait on a list to get into Beach, they would attend Beach. So we would have different specialty schools throughout the district, and a child, a child and family would be able to get chosen. So that's the first way of doing it. But once again, we have to make sure that we are, that the school board approved that mandate.
Mr. Simons?
When it comes right down to it, I believe in school choice. I believe that you have that right to choose what is the best school or program that you wish to send your child to based on that child's needs. There's no reason for us to be cutting any programs that are working. There's no reason for us to be getting rid of some of these specialty schools that are star performers. Reality is, we need to have school choice for all parents that want to send their kids to whatever school they want.
Ms. Brown?
The lottery was designed to give our children the best education possibly, but I'm of Mr. Ellis. The lottery just afford us to go to another school, whether we like the school in our neighborhood or not. But those schools that get more publicity are the ones that children are leaning toward. But all of our schools have a program, and I think the public needs to be made aware of what's available in each of our schools and make a choice. If your child wants to go to a performing arts school, find a well medical school, or there is a time when it comes to be that all of our schools should be able to be selected from.
And Ms. Byrne, you have the final word on this question.
Well, obviously, it starts by replicating our models of success. If there are hundreds of students on the waiting list to a specialty school, and that specialty school has been working for many years, then we need to have more schools just like that school with the same curriculum, the same level, the same school process. But we also need to make sure that the process for getting into those schools is transparent, that every parent knows that this lottery exists, that everyone knows that the lottery is fair, and that everyone has an opportunity to get into these schools. Ideally, we will have every school succeeding, and we will be able to eradicate the lottery by making... by making every school an excellent school.
And I ask again, please, to refrain from applause out of respect for all of the candidates. We'll move on to the next question first. I haven't seen it, but it's Dr. Lockamy here. It's going to make it a lot easier for me to ask this next question. Julie Wade.
It's his birthday.
It's his birthday. Well, we won't take sixty seconds to say happy birthday to him. However, I find this question necessary, if not a little distasteful. We started with Mr. Seabrook for this question. Julie Wade brought it up. We have the longest-serving superintendent in Chatham County's history. However, we could only begin to prepare ourselves for the fact that at some point, Dr. Lockamy will retire, presumably, probably during his term. How do you conduct a process to find a new superintendent as president of the board? What are you looking for in qualifications? And anything else that you'd like to add to your response? Mr. Seabrook, you're first.
Well, first of all, from having the conversation with Dr. Lockamy, he didn't mention that he would not serve as school board superintendent for a long period of time. But he has been working with people that we have already employed with Chatham County to groom them to take his place. The lady is Dr. Anne Polite. I know as Anne Polite, she's the former Savannah High School principal. So, I believe that we have to look first in-house at our current staff, but then, at the same time, open up a selection process where we're looking at nationally. We have a lot of brilliant and bright people here in Chatham County, but we also can draw a lot of people here to Savannah. Savannah is one of the best cities in the world. Even though we have complaints, we have an outstanding school system. But we must make sure that we're looking to hire the right person to come to work for us.
Mr. Silas?
I would, if, when that time comes, we will have a nationwide search, much like the Chatham County Commission just went through, in selecting the best person for the job, regardless of race, creed, or color. It will be open for us to find that best person that understands that what is the end product of our children in the schools. That is, an employable individual that can work, that can, as I said before, can work, develop a career, or go to college and work from there.
Ms. Brown?
Having said that on the selections for Dr. Lockamy, I think the system that was in place worked well, where, as it was said, we had an open application process, and then it was narrowed down to the selected best. Then it was narrowed down from there to the selected best, best. And as it stands, we open it up to everyone locally as well as nationally. So, I think when you open it up to a wide variety, you get a better selection to select from. So, that's the process we use when we selected Dr. Lockamy.
Ms. Byrne?
I agree, the best approach would be a national search that is open to everyone. You want to make sure when you're choosing the superintendent that it is somebody who uses data-driven solutions, somebody who has a proven record of success in communities and school districts that are very much like our own, somebody who you know can work with many different segments comfortably in the community, who is a good communicator, and somebody who's going to put the interests of our children first.
And Reverend Ellis, you have the last word.
Knowing that Dr. Lockamy will be in position to leave it when he gets ready, I would advocate that we, as a community, start now to get an understudy for him, so that the understudy can understand where we are, where we came from, where we're going as a district, rather than bringing someone in brand-new and cold, who may take us in a totally different direction. But if we get an understudy, so that by the time Dr. Lockamy becomes ready to retire, then the understudy can step right in. The business world do it all the time for CEOs.
This next question will be tailored for each candidate based on the things that I have been able to glean on my own and from some of the questions that have come in. It is one of the reasons why I reserve the right to craft all of the questions on my own. And it begins with Mr. Silas. This evening on the news, we recorded on an ethics complaint that's been made against you. It's been alleged that you have conducted lobbying activities without registering as a lobbyist. I want to ask everyone on this panel, and I have specific questions for each of you on this panel, to attest to your conflicts of interest, if you have any, and how you plan to dispose them if you are elected president of the board.
Quite, as of right now, I've not been notified by any body that there is an ethics complaint of any sort outstanding other than the media, which in my mind doesn't mean anything because it has not been officially notified. I represent, I'm a businessman. I represent several businesses that do business with the county, with the city, with the school board, with hospitals, et cetera. It is a, it is a fair question that you asked. Should that, should they actually be selected for a project in the school system? And I have a working relationship currently with them, and I would recuse myself. Other than that, right now, I have a right to make a living and feed my family, and I'll stay with that.
Thank you. Ms. Brown, you have been in the school system for a long time. How do you handle the personal relationships that you undoubtedly have built over decades while presiding over the school?
I will maintain the relationships as I do now, being a viable part, being knowledgeable, being aware of things that is needed and things that we should do. A relationship is something you just don't do overnight, it's something that you do continuously. And I will present myself to them as the person that will be a viable leader and help, and ask their help in working with us to make our system better.
Ms. Byrne, you, like me, have a child within the Savannah-Chatham Public School Districts. When it comes to Charles Ellis Montessori, when it comes to issues involving elementary or middle school students, how do you plan to address issues about a specific school that your child goes to?
Well, I think that it is actually an advantage to have a child in these schools, and it gives me an insight. For example, when we're talking about bell times and when the school board wants to start school at seven forty or seven-ten in the morning, I know how that affects families. So, I think that it's not going to be a conflict or a problem. I think it's actually going to be an advantage.
Reverend Ellis, my question for you is similar to the one for Ms. Brown. You have been in this community and in this system a long time, all the way down to your grandchildren now. How do you put forward the personal relationships that you have to be transparent in front of a group of people such as this one or anyone who convenes for a board meeting?
Within my family, there are nineteen members who have worked for Savannah-Chatham County Public School System. We have one hundred and sixty-seven years of service. Everyone knows that I'm a policy and procedure person. And if the policy and procedure fit you, whether you are my son, daughter, my child, my grandchild, you have to go by the policies and procedure. I'm straightforward that way, and I've always been that way, and I always will be that way.
Mr. Seabrook, my question for you is, employing the disclosures that are required by the State Ethics Commission for campaign contributions and personal finances, your personal finances have not been filed locally here with the Chatham County Board of Elections. Can you attest that you have no financial conflicts of interest, and can you explain why you have not filed that disclosure?
Well, I did file a disclosure. Now, whether the Board of Elections posted it or not, that's a different story, but it has been filed. I would say overall, I've raised roughly about ten thousand dollars. From that money, it came from my mom, my parents, my sisters, my brothers, well, my brothers, cousins, and they gave to my campaign. It was the family and the community. Now, for disclosure, ten percent of that did come from subcontractors, because they saw me working hard, and they believed that I would represent the entire business community. But really, I really want my mom and my sisters and them to know that I appreciate that, because they took their hard-on and ink and tax and fun, and they took me to follow my campaign.
Flowers usually say that back. The next series of questions are a way to sort of encapsulate many of the questions that you have given to me, but also in a way that doesn't just try to flesh out the beliefs of the candidates, but also to show you the way they think. So, for the next three questions, I would encourage all of the candidates to try to show the group how you think about these programs. And for this reason, I ask you to start each of these questions with a blank swig. Reverend Ellis, the first question begins with you. Chatham County embarks on a brand-new curriculum project. Design it.
If I had to design a new curriculum project, and we are in the midst of one right now, which is Common Core Curriculum, and Common Core is coming out all over the state, and I believe in it, and the way I would design it is that the way that the superintendent has already, and the board has already put in place, what I'd like to do is I'd like to continue the work that they've already started, so that we don't miss a beat. History tells us that when we change school board presidents and when we change superintendent, we start to go downward, and then we have to work our way back up. We need someone in there who can carry on from where we are.
Ms. Byrne, we now move to you, adjusting the orders so that everyone gets a chance to start and finish. Show us how you think. Design Savannah-Chatham County Public Schools curriculum.
Well, this is exciting. It's an exciting question. I would definitely want a school with more project-based learning. I was recently out at Tidy Maritime Academy, and the work they're doing out there is incredible. The children are so engaged, and all of the work is hands-on. If they are figuring out how to do averages, the students are drawing pictures of baseball players and are calculating batting averages. If they are learning about a science project, they are dissecting a real chart. The students there are so incredibly engaged, and it's because everything is hands-on. And I would like to see more schools that use this project-based learning, maybe replicate that with an aeronautics academy, where all the projects are based around that or replicated around another industry. The idea is not what industry it is. The idea is the projects, the way that the children are learning and excited and engaged.
Thank you. Mr. Seabrook, the question now comes to you. Show us how you think. Design Chatham County's curriculum.
Well, I believe the first thing that we need to do is use our most valuable resources. Let's bring the teachers to the table. Let's begin having that conversation with them, what works in the classroom and what has not been working in the past. Our teachers are some of the brightest and greatest people that we have in our community, but we're not tacking into their resource. So, we have to have them at the table first and foremost. But then also, we also look at research. We also begin to understand that there are proven curriculums out there that have been successful in every level of the community. But we have to go in it with an understanding that a curriculum cannot be a cookie cutter shape, and it would not fit every school. It would not fit every child. So, that's why we bring the teachers in, let them give us ideas on how to be flexible with the curriculum, and then we begin to develop it and build it up.
Ms. Brown, you're next. You've certainly created more than a few lesson plans. Create a curriculum for the entire district.
I will sit with the staff that has been employed to work on the curriculum. First, we will come up with ideas that, of things that's working now, and what we can cooperate with that. We have a fantastic curriculum. We just need to come together with planning. When I design it by myself, no, I will not. I will design it with board members and those staff persons and the teachers. And I will also cooperate too. Community will also be a viable part. When I started teaching school, we were able to take children on field trips to that related with what we were teaching. I would cooperate that way, so that the children would know what's in their communities that can work for them in future.
Mr. Silas, you get the last word on this question. Design us a curriculum and show us how you think.
Ladies and gentlemen, Tom Lockamy has forgotten more about education than I'll ever know. I'm not going to design a curriculum. What I am going to do is allow the experts at the school system to design a curriculum, bring it forward to the board, where we can make a decision that that's the best way to move in that direction. It is not the role of the school board or the school board president to design curriculums.
Thank you. At this time, we are going to take that junction that I promised, because I will not stand in the way of the Lord. We're going to offer Reverend Ellis two minutes to make his closing remarks, so that he can be on the pulpit at seven-thirty, and I don't have to head to confession this week. Reverend Ellis?
Thank you. Let me thank you for having me here tonight. Let me thank you for your questions. I wish that I could stay throughout the whole process. But when we first talked about this, it was a different day at a different time. This has run into something that has been in place for a long time. But let me say, when you are looking for the next president of Savannah-Chatham County Public School, do your research yourself. Look at the qualifications of every candidate. And I guarantee you, if you look at the qualification, Justice Ellis will be your next board president. Thank you.
Well, I will offer you my very thankful thanks. Uh, Justice Ellis, for being here with us tonight. Reverend Ellis, thank you. We will continue on with our forum now. This will continue with the one-minute responses. We will stay on the same theme, trying to show the group not only what you feel, but also how you think. The next question will begin with Ms. Brown. We will go back to her now and work our way around in different orders. Ms. Brown? There is a lot of debate over how we best incentivize teachers. Create your own teacher incentive program and explain to the group how best to work.
My teacher incentive program was, would be to academically prepare our teachers. But that I mean is that, train them, give them directions as to what is being taught and how to teach it. Give them ideas or workshops and strategies that they may use in the classroom to help with these children. Give them suggestions of community people that would help. Also, give them a classroom management workshop. Teach them how to deal with these children disciplinately as well as socially. Because sometimes you have to teach the social skills in order to get them to understand the academic skills. So, my teaching would be, after my own part, teach with your heart, prepare yourself, and prepare your children, so that they may be viable for the future.
Thank you. The next respondent in teacher incentives will go to Mr. Silas.
Well, it's sort of similar to the last question. I am not an educator. I'm a businessman. I believe that the role of the board is the running of the business of education of our children. With that, I will leave it once again to the experts' hands to devise and implement and create things that can help teachers as best as they can, because they know more about it than any of the people sitting on this panel right now.
We go now to Mr. Seabrook. Mr. Seabrook, teacher incentive program, how do you create it?
Well, I believe that it's the responsibility of the school board president to be the chief advocate for the whole community and everyone involved in the system, and that includes teachers. So, the first thing that we have to do to get to, to bring incentive to the table is let them know that we appreciate them, because a lot of times, they get overlooked. From going out and having conversations with teachers, sometimes they just want to know that administration and the board have their background. Sometimes they just want to know that even though we sit at 208 Bull Street or we have staff in place, that the people we have in place creating programs and plans understand what they go through on a daily basis. So, let's talk to our teachers. That be the first step that we do. Let that be the first incentive that we provide. Now, also, let's begin looking to create a true grievance process. Right now, the teacher reported a problem in the school, even though we have a hotline, that name is still recorded. So, we have teachers that are scared to report problems in our system. And that's a problem, because they're on the front line. They see when things go wrong. But if they're not able and willing to come up, that actually put our children in a hard way. So, we have to look at those two things. But please, if you see a teacher today, someone with a flower, tell them thank you.
And we close this question on teacher incentive with Ms. Byrne.
Well, I don't know if you've looked at what we pay our teachers, but if they're in the classroom, they're already very highly motivated to be there. I don't know that it's an issue of whether or not we're providing them with incentives. We know that they're doing their very best. What we need to be doing is providing them with the support they need to do their job, giving them the freedom to teach in the classroom and to do what they do best. giving them the freedom to teach in the classroom and to do what they do best. And we need to make sure that our schools are structured in a way that optimizes student success so that they have students who walk in the door eager and ready to learn.
Ms. Byrne, thank you. This is the last of these sort of open-ended questions that I've created, and it is certainly going to encompass many of the index cards that have come in to me before the forum began. And that involves standardized tests. While we would all like to say that standardized tests are... whatever your opinion is of that, there are elected leaders above the school board at the state and the federal level who will probably always mandate standardized tests because it is a way to show accountability that they deserve to hold the offices that they hold. So, as a member of the school board, as the president of the school board, an open-ended question for you, not necessarily about your beliefs about standardized tests, because I think it's an exercise in condemning standardized tests can just turn into an arms race about who can slam them the most. What I would like to hear from you is to design the best standardized test for our school children. And we begin that question with Ms. Byrne.
Well, I think the best standardized tests are ones that are nationally normed so that we know that our students are doing as well as students in other states. But you also want tests that are testing not so much how many different topics you've covered in any given class, but thinking skills. We want curriculum that not necessarily goes a mile wide, but goes a mile deep and encourages students to be able to solve problems and to think critically.
Ms. Brown, we'll turn the microphone to you now. What does your best standardized test look like?
My best standardized test looks like a child that has improved tremendously. If a child is at a third grade level and he hands himself to an early fourth grade level, that's improvement. If he's at the sixth grade level and he hands himself to the ninth grade level, that's improvement. But we need to start our children where they are and work with the skills that will help them pass the standardized test. I don't think all children should be rated the same on standardized tests because they learn at different rates, and they do it differently. But I do believe that we need to teach our children the concept so that they understand how to take a test. Because sometimes our children don't know the meaning of multiple meaning words. One word can have several meanings depending on how it's used. These are the things that I think we need to concentrate on.
Ms. Brown, thank you. Mr. Simons, return to you. Trying to avoid slamming standardized tests, which I think we could spend the rest of the hour doing, what does the best effort look like?
Nobody likes taking standardized tests. They provide a valuable service. Once again, not an educator, I'm not even going to try to pretend to answer this question. I don't have an answer on what the best-looking, best standardized test would be. I haven't taken a standardized test in so many years, it's ridiculous. So I'm just going to leave it there, and you guys can talk to me about it later.
Mr. Seaborough, you have the final word on this topic.
Well, every time that we talk about standardized tests, one story comes to mind. It was a mom that I ran into not too long ago, and she said that her son came and her literally pulling out his hair saying, "Mom, I have to pass my standardized test because if I fail, my teachers are going to get fired." He was worried about it. He couldn't go to sleep at night. He said that he was going to get duffed back in the third grade. What we have to do, standardized tests, we're going to have, they're going to be there. And they usually come down from the state with a mandate. But what we have to do is change the atmosphere that we're testing our children in. We're providing extra layers of stress on their life every day. And the teacher is doing it because it's coming down from the principal. The principal is doing it, it's coming down from the superintendent. And the superintendent is doing it because it's coming from the board. So we have to look at what we're doing, how we're doing it, and we have to think about a better way of creating a different atmosphere for our children.
Mr. Seaborough, thank you. I spoke early on about the qualitative growth that I've seen in the 10 years that I spent away from Savannah that the Savannah-Chatham Public School District has gone through and improved. I want to talk about the quantitative growth now. We can all recognize the rate at which this county is growing, particularly in areas to the west, despite how far away they may be, Ms. Brown. I would like to hear from you what your views on growth is and how this district addresses them. We have New Hampstead High School now, which is gleaming and brand-new, and I hope one day perhaps to send my boys to. However, it is projected to be potentially the biggest high school in this district soon, if not next year. We have a redistricting plan in Poole and Fort Wentworth that has parents up in arms. How do you manage the linear growth of raw people that this county is enduring and this district is enduring, and how do you brace this district for it? And I start with Mr. Simons on this one, if we keep going in order.
Growth is a good thing. That means more jobs. That means better tax base, which will allow us to build more schools, to create more programs, and to create better learning environments. So, right now, we have to adjust to grow with times. And there's a lot of people that are going, there's a lot of specialty programs, we can get back to that. Bottom line is, the school system and the board is paid to manage that program, and in doing so, they will do their best effort to get it right.
Mr. Seaborough, we turn to you. How do you build a district or preside over a board that braces this district for growth?
Well, right now, we're currently growing about 800 students a year. So growth is there, and it's there, that's something that's stated. But what we have to do, we have two great universities here, Savannah State University and Alpham. One thing we have to do is make sure that we're preparing our teachers ready to go to work, timely graduating from college. So we work with our universities, get the students in the classroom, there's going to be teachers getting them prepared, that's first. Second, regardless of who we elect, the next president will go back to the community and ask for East Splat Street. That's just going to happen, that's going to be reality. Whoever your president is, they're going to come and ask for East Splat Street to continue to build, build this to house our students. Right now, we're overcrowded in some buildings, we're still using trailers, so we still need the resource. So, as I say, first, work with our colleges and our universities and preparing the next level of teachers that come out, because we're going to need teachers as long as we need buildings as well. Begin identifying if we can actually get an East Splat Street pass because our community is a little bit tired of the Splat program period.
Mr. Seaborough, thank you. Ms. Byrne, how do you brace this district for growth?
Well, I think it's very important that there is long-term planning, particularly when it comes to construction. We've already seen the public very frustrated with change orders that have cost the system millions of dollars. So we want to make sure that whenever we look at how those funds, the East Splat funds we have now are managed, that contracts are awarded to qualified contractors, that there is transparency in how that money is spent, that there is accountability in how that money is spent, so that when you go to taxpayers and you ask them to approve East Splat Street, because we know we will need the funding for additional schools, that we have built up a public trust and they have faith in us to use those funds, that the funds appropriately.
Ms. Brown, how do you brace Savannah-Chatham County Public Schools for growth?
Growth is a good thing, because when we have growth, our economy prospered. When our economy prospered, that brings money to our school board. But we have to look at all aspects of the school board. We have to look at it carefully. Yes, we have growth, but now, as it was said, we need to pre-plan if this area is growing what is needed. Again, it becomes a collective discussion as to what we do. Now, my perspective is I would look at those areas, take my findings back, and then we compare it to some other areas, and we move with the growth. Regardless of where the growth is, we move with the growth. Now, how I would design it, I could not say I would design it A, B, C, because I would have to look at the growth areas myself.
Ms. Brown, thank you. Let's move on to budget. When it comes to a budget, this body essentially has three choices. It can raise the military. It can reduce instructional days, as most districts around Georgia have had to do in tight budgets in the last few years. Or it can reduce spending based on things like people services or educational improvement. Faced with that dilemma, and we'll begin with Mr. Seaborn, prioritize how you balance a budget. That is, another round of tough economic times. You're basically left with the choices of raising the military to increase revenue, to reduce instructional days to save money on things like teacher salaries, or to cut programs like people services that, for one, transport our children from one end of the county to another to attend specialty programs.
Well, I say overall, you're leaving out a lot of stuff that we can do to adjust the budget.
But those are the three, and I would grant you the time for this because as a moderator, I feel like sometimes, you know, we need to put this into context. Those are the three budgetary areas. This will lead the budget breaks down into those three areas. The revenue comes in, the money is spent on either instruction, improvement to instruction, or people services.
So the first thing, the first thing that we need to do is go ahead and look at, and work closely with Senator Jackson, I saw him here earlier. But right now, the table we have is called Senate Bill 10. It already passed a couple of years ago. And what that bill does, it allows for children with IEP to remove themselves from the public school system and go to a private school. When the private school have these children with IEPs and special needs, they keep them there for a while to receive the tax dollar, and then they begin counseling them to go back to the public school. The problem is that tax dollar does not follow that child back to the public school. And from talking to the superintendent, Lockman, that equates for over $3 million in the last couple of years. So first, we need to begin lobbying our state legislators to revise Senate Bill 10. That's first. Second, we need to review the budget and get rid of things that we really don't need in the budget. There's a line item in the budget where we actually allow for school board members to go to other parts of the country for training. Let's remove that. We have technology. Let's begin Skyping. Let's begin using technology. Let's get away things that we don't need in the budget before we talk about cutting services. Let's begin thinking outside of the box.
Thank you. Ms. Byrne, I bring the same dilemma to you. Raise the military to increase revenue, reduce instructional days to save money on teacher salaries, or cut the services that basically fall in line items to people services or improvement to instruction?
Well, you never want to reduce the amount of time that students are getting instruction. That's the number-one priority for our schools. I do think that we have a number of ways that we can manage our funds more widely and that we don't have quite the crisis that some may think. We have, in the past 10 years, gone from spending $10 million on transportation to 24. There are a number of ways that we can reduce transportation costs for our students, for our system. We used to have a grant writer who was on staff who brought in millions of dollars for specialty schools. The school board no longer has someone in that position, so hiring someone whose sole focus is to bring more money into the system, money that is not coming from taxpayers, would be a priority for balancing our budget. And then the other thing is simply evaluating the programs that we have and making sure that they are effective. The programs that are not serving students well, we can eliminate.
Ms. Brown, the dilemma comes to you. Raising taxes by way of the military to increase revenue, reducing instructional days, or taking a look at things like people services and improvement to instruction?
I think we need to start internally. All departments need to come together, plan.
And let's start again.
Okay. Hear me here? Okay. I think we need to start internally. One department doesn't know what the other is doing or the others. What I mean by that is, the budget is the overall. Curriculum needs to meet with budget to see what we've spent, what we need to spend. Human resources needs to meet. We need to come together collectively, sit down, and pre-plan, pre-examine to see what it is that we have spent, that we didn't need to spend, what it is we need, and what we have on hand. Once that planning is coming into effect, and we check our budget, and we see what is there, then we can make an honest decision as to whether we need to raise taxes or we need to change some things internally first.
Mr. Simons, you have the final word on this one. Raising the military to increase revenue, reducing instructional days to save money on teacher salaries, or taking a look at programs like people services and improvement to instruction?
All right, let's get a little group participation here. How many would like property taxes? How many want to pay more property taxes?
Nobody likes that. My kids don't like no more, but that is terrible.
My promise to the taxpayers of Chatham County who are funding these schools is I will not vote to raise property taxes, ever. I've taken a pledge not to raise property taxes, ever. There's other ways to go in about the business of the school board, to cut the costs, like the transportation program. Right now, I'll just leave it there, and thank you.
The next question comes from not only an audience member, but from one of our PTA members who submitted questions in advance on SouthernMamas.com. Big plug for SouthernMamas.com. And it involves Governor Deal signing in the General Assembly's passage of new firearms legislation that permits schools to train personnel who carry firearms on campuses. I would simply like to know how you feel about that possibility in Chatham County Public Schools. We begin this question with Ms. Byrne.
Well, that's easy. Guns and children don't mix. We do not need guns in our schools, period.
Ms. Brown.
I have nothing to say to that, but I agree wholeheartedly. Look at the news reports that you see. They're trying to break them in anyway, but if we monitor it, I'm with that wholeheartedly. No guns for no children.
To Mr. Simons.
Guns have no place in schools. That's... Nothing means it needs to be more than that.
And Mr. Seaborough.
Oh, the thing I'm worried about, even if we traded somebody to properly handle the gun, what happened when that person has a bad day? And we have no children? It really doesn't make sense, so I agree with the rest of the people in the panel. We don't need to have guns in schools.
That's a new record for fastest-responsive forum. Never seen anything like it. Let's turn now to special education. We have a number of questions about special education. We've heard from some of the candidates about IEP. However, what we've seen in some schools is a trend towards incorporating students with IEPs and special education plans into regular classrooms. I would simply like to know how you feel you can improve upon special education programs along IEPs, along any other topic, along the subject that you care to address. In, again, we go back to the system of winners and losers. I will not call anyone in a special education program a loser, however, I will call them underserved. And I will ask quite simply how you would go about trying to raise that bar for an underserved community within our schools. And we begin this with... Ms. Byrne, you went first last time, right? So we start with Ms. Brown.
I have to teach you for some years of teaching inclusion. I think what we're doing in the school system works well. We just need a little more training in that aspect for our classroom teacher and our special ed teacher. I see remarkable things being done. I can't tell you all what I would like to do because I see it every day when I'm in the school. And I taught inclusion when I taught school for 18 years. And it works to have those children in the regular classroom, but we need, again, for our teachers, we need a little more training. We're getting teachers now that come in from other professions, and they're not really ready for what the school brings them. Colleges don't prepare you for that classroom, it prepares you academically, but they need some additional training on how to work with children with special needs and how to adapt their programs for their needs. So, right now, I'm in full cooperation, full concern, full understanding of the system.
And we turn now to Mr. Simons.
Every child deserves an education regardless of their abilities. Whatever we can do to help them must... Whatever we can do to help them must be done. It has to be in a broad spectrum, bringing an inclusionary performance. But once again, I'm not an expert on education, but I do know that every child deserves that education.
Mr. Seaborn?
I had a conversation with a mother who has a child with special needs, and she was looking to find a school to place her child. And she went to the school website, and it was horrible. It gave her no direction, no help. It didn't even point her in the right direction of how to get an IEP. She was lost, and she was confused. So, the first thing we need to do when it comes to special education, update our website. Let them know where the resources are. That's where, that's easy, we can do that. The second thing is, right now with autism, statistics changing every day, we need to make sure that we're prepared for that. My wife is actually writing a book on autistic children, but she has to change it every other week because statistics change every week. So, there's going to be a real problem that we're going to face. But moreover, we have to make sure that in the schools, we're following the IEPs. The students have IEPs, but in some situations, the special education teacher may leave the room when he's supposed to be there full-time, which put an extra, additional burden on the teacher. So, we have to fix the website quickly. We have to make sure that we are providing resources for all of the parents there, letting them know the best way to be tested, and we have to make sure that we're working hard.
Thank you. Thank you.
I was a long-term sub at Coastal Comprehensive Academy for a year. That is our specialty school that focuses on students who have special needs and have a hard time making it in inclusion classes. So, I know how very hard our teachers were to meet those students' needs, and I know that parents of special needs children learn to be advocates for their children very quickly. We need to provide the appropriate training and support for our special education teachers, and we also need to make sure that we have a clear process for our parents and how to get the services that they need and how to ensure that the IEPs that our students have are being met.
Ms. Burn, thank you. I've got two questions that I think I can encapsulate into one from the audience. One involves childhood obesity and the school system's role in mitigating against it. The other has to do with empowering youth in schools and serving impoverished population. In other words, how does the school system play a role in lifting people out of poverty? To encapsulate this into one question, what role does the school board, what role does the school system play in children's lives outside of the walls of the school? Whether it be in mitigating against child obesity or providing programs that might help lift people out of poverty. With that, I think we will start with Mr. Simons because I think this is going to be our last question. I'd like to work down that way and fini- I'm sorry, I'd like to start with Ms. Brown and work back this way because Mr. Simons is entitled to the first last word because he has the last first word. Mr. Simons, here. Uh, Ms. Brown, see, I can't even keep, I can't even keep this straight.
Maybe there's a clarity. You said, "How can we pull our children out of poverty?"
What role does the school system play in improving children's lives before the bell rings and after the bell is dismissed?
Again, I have to talk to you all from experience that I'm there. Most schools have an early morning program where they work with children academically. We have a breakfast program that children are able to get a hot breakfast. You all may not think it's hot, but to them, it's hot. We have an after-school program that we work with children academically, and we provide them with a hot meal in the afternoon. Poverty is something that we just have to work on. How do we solve it? I do not have a clue as to how we can solve it, but we can work on it to improve our children, to show our children that they themselves don't have to remain in poverty because they started out. Let their academics and their work help them and speak for them so they, when they become parents, we would have alleviated some of the poverty in our city.
Ms. Burn, what role does the school system play in children's lives before the bell rings and after the bell is dismissed?
Well, I think that education is about more than just learning your ABCs. It's about learning the soft skills needed to connect with other people, to build relationships, whenever you finally graduate, to be a productive member of society, to succeed in college. And that starts with making connections to teachers, to parents, and to community members. Inviting community partners in to the schools before and after programs is one way that we can do that. Such a very broad question, it's a little difficult to answer. I would like to say, just very quickly about childhood obesity since someone asked that question, that I think it's very important that teachers know that students need recess and that teachers do not take recess away from children as punishment. This is not being discussed right now, and it is not acceptable. And I think it should be a priority for our school board to ensure that every child has an opportunity every day to get physical education.
Mr. Seaborn, in the interest of avoiding being vague, tell me specific things about the way a public school system should serve a child's life before the bell rings and after it is dismissed?
Well, first of all, let me touch on the school lunch thing. Actually, the Student Senate came before the school board today and we voted against our school lunch, just to let you all know that they are against it. But also, I believe that it takes a village in order to raise a child. We have to work at this as a community. It takes the parents, the school board, the entire system. This can be done, we need to start looking at pre-K education. We do, we work closely now with our public pre-Ks, but we're not working so well with our private pre-Ks. We create something simple called a board certification program, where we go inside our early childhood areas and we help them teach the things that will prepare them for kindergarten and then just give them a certification. What I would do as a parent, as I'm shopping for a pre-K school, I will look for that certification. So, now I'm letting my child be prepared for early education. So, the second thing that we need to start doing, we have to make sure that our kids are prepared for either the work for us at post-secondary school. This can be done by building upon relationships that we already have with partners in the community. We have more than a responsibility than to teach them ABCs. I believe as a community, we have the responsibility to teach them to be great members of our community.
Mr. Seaborn, thank you. I think you're actually beginning to enjoy this one. Mr. Simons, what role does the school system play in a child's life before the bell, summons them to school, and after it is dismissed?
I feel very little. The role of the parents needs to be enhanced, that the parents take care of their children before they come to school, when they come home from school, they work with them to do the homework, they work with them to do the practice, they give them the playtime. It's the role of the parents to be in charge of the child. It's not the role of the school board or the school system to run the child's life.
Okay, we have a couple of minutes. We have two minutes for final responses. That puts us at eight minutes. That gets us to about 7:55. I have one question that has burned in school board meetings in the past and burned up the phone lines at WSAB that I think I would like to ask as a simple yes/no. And again, we can start with Ms. Brown and move down. This applies specifically to Garrison, and this is why I avoided the question and answer from the crowd because the focus can get very narrow, but I think this specific question does apply outward to the issue that I brought up at the beginning of the forum of having a system of winners and losers and how do you mitigate against it. And this has burned up the phone lines at WSAB and I know has burned up more than one board meeting, and that is, should students in one specialty program be provided a direct path to another? I'm using the specific case of Garrison School for Performing Arts giving direct access into Spina Arts Academy, which is five, all accounts, one of the best schools in this state, public or private. Do you think specialty programs should provide a free path into another specialty program, Ms. Burn?
Yes.
Ms. Burn?
Absolutely not.
Mr. Seaborn?
No.
Mr. Simons?
No.
I think we just set a new record for responses of any forum of any topic from the school board all the way up to the presidency. Again, please withhold your applause until the end. I will give you one more opportunity to applaud everyone. I will make some closing remarks, but first, we will offer two minutes to each of our candidates here for their closing responses, and we begin, I think, with Mr. Simons.
Once again, my name is David Simons. I am a businessman, a veteran. I believe in certain core values that come. I believe that we don't need to have more taxes. I believe that every child who graduates our system can get a job, can get a career that they will be, that they can work in, or they can go to college. There's a lot of things that are great about our school system, and I'm not going to be the one sitting up here bashing it because we've got a great superintendent, we've got a great group of teachers, more can be done, more will be done.
Mr. Seaborn, you have two minutes.
Well, overall, my name is George Seaborn. I'm running for school board president. Just to let you guys know, because I didn't do this in the introduction, I have a master's in public administration, also a bachelor's degree in political science with a minor in education, and that gives me the educational toolset to understand and read the budget, also to understand organizational structure, communication, things that all go in play in the school system. But in addition to that, running for office is hard. I really didn't understand the concept of it until I fully became a candidate, and I get tired sometimes, but the old days that I get tired, I remember the conversation I had about that special, that special education child and that parent that felt lost. I remember the teachers that feel like they're under attack, and I remember the 2,000 children that are two or more grades behind. And that motivates me every day to get out my bed and knock on one more door and make one more phone call, and I'm going to bring that same motivation to the school board once you guys let me in, and I'm going to fight hard for you guys every day, day in and day out, because I believe that it's more than just one vote, that you're more than just the president to sit there. The reason why you're there is to be the chief advocate for the community, and that's why I'm running. So, hopefully, you guys will put your faith in me, you will want somebody that's going to sit there and fight for you every day, day in and day out. You will want a person that's more than just a vote, but also have the understanding to ask the right questions, because we do, we have a great superintendent, he has done a good job compared to those in the past. But we also want to have to make sure that we have board members that are asking the right questions and leading them in the right direction. So, overall, my name is George Seaborn. I'm running for school board president, and hopefully, I can count on your vote, May 20.
Again, my name is Joanne Byrne, and I'm running for school board president because I believe in the power of public education to lift up children, families, and entire communities. We have wonderful teachers at all of our schools, and we have some of the very best schools in Georgia, right here in Chatham County. But we also have schools that are struggling to meet students' needs. It is fundamentally wrong that any child should be denied an excellent education because they don't live in the right civic code or they don't get their name pulled out of a lottery. I believe that it is time that we replicate our models of success so that every child is going to an excellent school. We know that we are facing many challenges in the coming years. We have a budget that seems to, the funding coming in seems to be shrinking as the population is growing, but if we manage our funds wisely, if we look at things like our transportation costs and bringing more money in from grant writing, then I think that we can make sure that we provide the services our students need without having to raise taxes. Although, I do applaud all members and audience today who would be willing to make that sacrifice because they know that the number one priority for our, our community is ensuring that every child receives an excellent education. I am a product of public schools. I'm the mother of a child who goes to public school. I was a public school teacher. Currently, I teach at Savannah State University, and I'm asking for your vote on May 20.
Ms. Burn, you have the final word.
Again, my name is Sadee Seaborn. I'm presently in the school system, and I will always be there. I'm the mother of two, one is his son, but I'm also the mother of 36,000. Being there, I see the need. My hope is to bring some accountability to our system, work with our teachers so that they would be better prepared and not so frustrating in teaching because they are the fore-runner. They're the persons responsible for your children's test scores. I would also like to bring together the businesses and the community together, along with parents, working with our children. As it was said in the year, we have schools that are performing a little better, but my philosophy is that all of our schools can perform. All we have to do is get together and make sure they perform. Someone said we don't have, we have good teachers. Yes, we have. We have good, we have excellent, and then we have a little good. Okay? What I mean by that is, we have teachers that are just so frustrated that says, whatever goes. They pick up a book, they teach, whether the children are listening or not. As I said earlier, I've been in schools in this system. In one classroom I went to work in, in a special ed capacity, the teacher was teaching with a microphone. Is that acceptable? Or is she just frustrated and she's mandated to teach whether the children are learning or not? Sometimes, we have to put down the books and understand our children. With that, I'm saying to you, I ran once before, I lost by eleven votes. I'm here now, not to run against these people, but to run for the seat because I know I can be a voice for our children. I'm asking you to vote for me, May 20th, Sadee Seaborn.
Ms. Brown, thank you. At this time, let me first ask that you give all of the candidates a round of applause. Julie Wade, I think, said it best and probably knows far better than I do that it is thankless work, it is long hours, the pay is horrible, and that each of them took their time to be here in front of you to answer your questions and to respond to your concerns. I also want to thank you. I am delighted by the turnout that's here tonight. I think it's a testament to the importance of the election, to the care that goes into this community, and I think is the secret ingredient to why Savannah County Public Schools have improved as much as they have in the past 10 years that I have seen them improve. Finally, I want to thank you for having me. I hope that you will tune in to WSAB and watch me on Close to Sunrise. I will not miss the opportunity to have a captive audience and ask that, and remind you that this forum has been livestreamed on WSAB.com and will be available on demand on our website, WSAB.com, conclusion of what I think is the end of this forum. Thank you for being here tonight. So, as long, so as far as, as far as they are available, please feel free to engage the candidates so long as they can stay. I'm here to welcome your questions and concerns, and please thank the members of the JTA, Southern Mamas, and the other organizations in this forum. Thank you.